Welcome to City of Potaski City Council meeting for November twenty first, two thousand twenty-two. I ask that you rise with me for the pledge of allegiance of the United States of America's flag. I just like that because we have nobody sitting down. There's no protests. It's really nice. I don't know how we'll handle it when it happens, but. We'll let the audience take care of it. Next, I'd like to go to roll and I'll go to city clerk back for roll.
Demore, present. Shield?
Here.
Wagner?
Here.
Walker, present. Murphy?
Present. What I'd like you to do on the agenda is under new business, it would be number eleven and eleven and twelve would slide down to twelve and thirteen. Is that right?
Ten C.
Ten C is where it will be. I'm sorry. Ten C will be new business is uh. What's the summation of this? It's a state high water infrastructure grant program that's available that we need to move on quickly. Shane, our city manager, will describe that to you when it comes up, but it's a good deal for the city to to have the opportunity of. Eighty percent of a hundred percent, so we paid twenty to fund a grant, so. That's a change. Can I have a motion for the change?
So moved.
Second, I have a motion from. Mister Shields and second from Mister Wagner. Any other discussion? I go to city clerk back for all.
Shield?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yeah.
Demore?
Aye.
Walker?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes, motion passes. We now have an agenda established. Next, it's a public hearing. It's received receipt of comments concerning proposed special assessment role. That would spread cost of downtown management programs and services during two thousand twenty-three as requested by the downtown management board. For that, I will call on. Becky Goodman. Is that right? Or do you want to handle it? It's a public hearing. Receipt of comments. I'm sorry. Yeah. Any comments from the public that wishes to share with us a comment on this? Receipt that we are receiving. On the proposed role. Is there any online? There's none. We'll close that public comment. And we'll go to the receipt of comments concerning the city's proposed two thousand twenty-three annual budget. And the property tax mileage rates and appropriations as recommended for two thousand twenty-three fiscal year. Does anybody wish to speak to council regarding that matter? If you would, you would come up and give your full name. We'll turn the mic on. You'll give us your full name, full address, and you can give comments to this council. There being none. We'll now move on to number five. That's a presentation by Tom Johnson, Landmark Loop. Absolute Property Rehabilitation Act, also called the Oprah for four twenty-four Emmett Street.
Yeah, hit the button on the microphone that they bar.
There you are.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. I know you're not, Tom. So who are you?
I'm also there with Silver Properties and I'm actually the owner of the building that's we're going to take on this project. And so thank you for the time tonight. I understand I have a couple hours to present our case here, but. Two and a half, okay, perfect. But I just, you know, just a quick brief intro here. My wife and I are involved in multifamily housing in Detroit and we've been in Charlotte for about twenty plus years and just recently we completed the hotel. And my goal was to, I need something to do, so I found this property this summer. Four point four, I'm excited about it. I don't know if we can maybe have some of the slides going. What I'm excited about this is that I think there's a, as I think most folks would agree because I hear the topic a lot, that there's a real need for housing up here. And there was a term that she's being thrown out called workforce housing, whatever that might be, but what I do know is this. There's business owners here in town that I'm friends with that. I ran this project by them and they're like, oh, can we take four of those units? Can we take five of those units? And I've actually heard of some of those friends also buying homes for their employees. Now, it gives them the advantage over some others that haven't done that, but I think it also shows there's a real need and a real demand for this. And so what I like about this one project is that. I like to restore our buildings. It's kind of what I do. It makes me happy. And this is a building that's been that's been shut down. I've lived since two thousand six. You'll see from the presentation up there for briefly from nineteen eleven to nineteen eighteen, there was a Potaski hospital as well as a nursing home. And it was also known as the Hotel Delaware at one time. As it says, I purchased it this past summer. And if you start to advance to some of the pictures below, we'll see what it looked like at one time. Don't have the exact date on this picture. That porch that is over the sitting porch on the first floor. I believe that was one of those. Temporary sleeping porches, I guess, used in the summertime when pre-A C. So I don't think it's a permanent structure, but the building currently does not have that in place. And if you would have come down to the next slide, please, we have a request utilizing the Oprah Act of two thousand. Which would hopefully give us an opportunity to rehabilitate this property. And we're also seeking a request of a twelve year payment on the taxes. Quite frankly, the project doesn't make financial sense unless there's some help from from you folks. And then taxes will be frozen there currently until that twelve years and then after that there will be increased. Things that I noticed in here, if you advance to the next slide. Is that this is the first step. Hopefully with your approval down at one of the future meetings. We're going to be going to the state and looking for some grants there as well, from what I understand, it's quite a field of work out there. And then if you can see from the numbers up there on the screen, without funding, the project's not viable. We figured out with Tom's help and with Mike Bator from Shoreline, that there's a return of about five percent on this project. And there was. No general contractor fees. There's nothing. What I'm being paid on the side is just me in this project together. And overseeing the construction to try to make this thing happen. If you were to look at the next slide. We're looking at about twelve units altogether. It's three stories with one, we like to say garden level in the basement. But we're hoping to, we have preliminary plans to have three on each floor, bringing in this up to twelve. Altogether. Now, the building's been gutted. I guess I was told that there's been a couple of ones prior to myself that'll try to take on this endeavor. So it's actually down to the studs. There's no electrical. There's no plumbing. There's walls and there isn't any plaster. We're projecting the total cost of the project to be around one point eight million. If you were to move on to the next. Slide, you'll see the current condition. It's in. Pretty much speaks for itself, I think. And although it's not a quote unquote historical property, I would treat it as a historical property where my goal is to bring it back to the way it used to look. With similar siding, you know, windows, you name it, that I think you can't replace that look, so I'm going to keep it. We'll move on to the next slide. We'll see some photos of the front porch. In fact, the ceiling and porch here is light blue. Does anyone know why this?
The sky?
Yes, but do you know why why this?
Because for people in a hospital, that's a good thing? I don't know.
Well, so my wife is, she loves watching those on several of those shows where we have homes. And down south, they had a project they were restoring and they were painting the ceiling of the porch light blue. Because that mimics the sky, which keeps the spiders from going up there and bugs. That's funny. Emmett has the same thing. Anyway. Didn't say this wasn't going to be educational either. But you can see the front porch as a whole, that his plywood was, you know, stapled down to that would keep him from going out there. We would want to bring all of that back to its original look. If you were to look at the next slide, we have some foundation issues. That I definitely manage well, but you know, it's. It's already new. The next slide shows you the windows are all buried out at the moment. If you move on to the next, you'll start to see some of the interior photos. So the one, the picture on the left is the entry, which is actually not original. So I have my plan with Mike Bator's. Who would be to get rid of that. And then when you start looking on the inside and you can see on the next slide. She's been gutted down with the studs. Now, there are some structural issues, but I personally, I like that it's in this state because it gives us an idea. Much easier of what needs to be done versus demoing and then finding out what the issues might be. And if you just proceed to the next page. It's just multiple pictures of the condition of the property throughout. It's pretty consistent, that's for sure. Apparently there were a couple of fires over the years, so you can see that chart, chart choice up on the second, third floor. And let's see here on the summary, which I believe is the next slide, just gives you some of the facts that I've sprinkled in the presentation. Building's a hundred and twenty years old. Obviously needs some work. It's been broken since two thousand six and this is an opportunity where we're looking to add twelve. Apartments here in Potaski, of which they would be roughly give or take about six hundred square feet. Studios to one bedrooms. And everything would be up to cover. And I believe, unless Tom had missed anything. Okay, wasn't quite two and a half hours. But appreciate your time. Are there any questions?
Mister Moore?
Hi, I know it's early on, but do you have an idea what the anticipated cost per unit would be?
We're anticipating roughly about one point eight million, so give or take, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand per unit. Yep, hopefully.
Are you looking to sell those units?
Yeah, okay. My wife are buy and hold folks, so you know, we're not condoning it out. We're just looking to provide housing for them down the road.
Mister Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation and and bringing this project to us. And it's something we've talked on council is is sunset clauses. So how would you feel if if we were to go forward with the Oprah that there'd be? If nothing happens in two years, we would, it would, it's sunset.
That's that's a great question, and I suspect from some other projects in town, I might be where that's coming from. I'm anxious to get this thing going and it's my understanding that the, I've never been through this process, to be honest with you, and that's why I'm working with Tom and Mike. So the sooner we can get this thing going, the better. But it's my understanding, it might take a while because. After, if we are successful with you folks, then we have to go to the state and it's at the mercy of that process and the amount it takes. So to answer your question, I would hope that wasn't part of it, if it was not in my control.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Miss Walker?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. This is a very exciting potential project, so thank you for the presentation. Can you tell me, have you talked with Emmett County Planning and Zoning or the Building Department to get it qualified as being obsolete?
We have. Do you have any details on?
Contacted the new assessor because it hasn't been clarified by assessor. We have initiated the process and it should be pretty easy, but it has to be done.
Okay.
There's so much of the value missing.
And then the Oprah process with the state is something that you're working with your architect on, right?
Yes.
Got it. Thanks.
Miss Demore?
So I'm the new person at the table and a learner, sorry, I thought they were for sale units. So do you have an idea of estimated rents for the units?
We're anticipating based on today's runs from what we can, we can see somewhere from the eight hundred to a thousand range is what we're looking at for the studios and the one bedrooms.
Mister Wagner?
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you as well. The, the twelve, twelve year abatement, that, what is that based on?
That's based on punching the numbers. You know, that when it comes down to it, the cost of construction today. Has made the challenge for new construction. I ideally typically like to purchase buildings that are inhabited, inhabited, I should say. And and they just need to be updated and refreshed. This one is. Hard past that.
It's certainly costs are high and expenses are high and essentially if we run the basement first, I have the term, the one that determines. The debt coverage and that goes, I call them to the rest of our medical funds because it's too close to a burden.
They have rates are about seven percent right now. What's that?
Once it runs out, it starts to slow the bill and then it gets above that point. So that's why we asked.
They just dropped to half a percent though, didn't they?
Just, yeah. From seven one, oh, one, that is six. I couldn't believe it when I actually asked my banker, and she's like, seven?
So Mister Mister Shields asked about a sunset. Is it reasonable for us to assume some time limit that we could? Work with you on that would be where we would feel comfortable with a sunset clause on it?
Yeah.
You would need to come back to us?
Yeah, something within reason. I mean, I, it's not going to be held up because of me, I can tell you that.
I understand that, but the, some of our projects that we have in town right now, I'm sure he would say the same thing. It's not his, his. You know, his doing. What what would be reasonable counsel? Mister Shields, do you have the idea?
I do not, but I would be happy to look into that and happy to hear, you know, maybe a back and forth and come up with something that works.
Yeah, I'm I'm totally open to working with you folks, but the. The scary thought that just came to my mind is that we're near end month twenty-three. And and not because of my doing, the project hasn't started yet. So does that mean we go back to zero and the building stays the way it's at? That's the only thing about the sunset that scares me. I'm just being honest.
You're at twenty-three, meaning what?
Months. Cause I think you proposed possibly a two-year sunset.
No, I, I, not necessarily.
Oh, I'm just a number out there yet. I don't, I'm just, I was sorry. Yeah, I think something that makes sense. I mean, I can understand why you folks want to see something happen quickly as well as I would. So someone is. Comfortable with it. I don't see why not.
How do you come up with twenty-three?
I, I, I've heard two years. I don't know why. So I was saying in, I'll just ban three months. We haven't started because of other issues.
All right. Would you, also, do you have some suggestions? Mister, Mister Wagner?
I know you have to apply for the Oprah funds and there's the process involved in that and you've just acquired the property and I don't know, building permits. Via the county, I'm sure have a, have a date to them.
That's experience usually is months on a permit, but then they can be extended.
Right, exactly. So I would think that some kind of sunset clause could be discussed if that, if and when the Oprah.
That would make sense. That's the start time right there.
Then you'll have to come back here to council anyway, so. Be thinking about it, I guess. That would be the best thing for, I could say is to be thinking about what kind of sunset clause you can work within because. I think council is speaking that we've been frustrated with. Processes and business operations right now.
I get it. May, and I just want to, I, I agree and also add that personally, generally, I'm supportive of this and look forward to coming back and and further in this discussion.
Thank you.
And I as well. I think ten, twelve apartments or ten, twelve apartments, especially in the downtown walking area. I think it's fantastic, so.
Way before we see you.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Counsel, if I may, the purpose of this presentation is, as we've. As Paul and and Tom and Mike have sat down with our team was really just to. To brief you on the project first and then the the goal would be to get in front of you. A couple of resolutions to set public hearings for setting the Oprah district and then approving the Oprah application, so. As long as council is supportive of us taking that next step, we'll proceed accordingly.
Sure we are, yes. Forward on. Next is the consent agenda and it's the adoption of a proposed resolution that would confirm approval of the following. November seventh, two thousand twenty-two regular session, city council meeting minutes is well acknowledged as a receipt. Concerning certain administrative tangs actions that have occurred since November seventh, two thousand twenty-two, and I take it to city council for possible. Adoptions, but also if there is questions or changes. Miss?
I'll be happy to make a motion, Mayor.
Okay. I have a motion from Miss Walker and a second from Mister Wagner. Also, I know we have some questions. Mister Moore?
Mine is not specifically a question, but I'm on page three. Of the minutes, the last meeting where we discussed the height increase zoning ordinance amendment and at that time, the.
I hear people still chit and chat just.
Everybody good? Okay, anyway, the minutes accurately reflect that we had intended or that that there was going to be a public hearing scheduled for December five. And a second discussion for December nineteenth. While that's accurate, I just thought it might be a moment to clarify so that on the record, everybody's clear what's happening with that. Moving forward, so I don't know, Shane or?
We can talk on that. No, if you want to do it.
Yeah, I can do it. So we have gotten some feedback on that planning commission discussion. The item wasn't addressed on the agenda, so really to. To kind of cure that concern, we are going to kind of reset the clock, reset the the meeting, if you will, send it back to planning commission. Obviously have it. Addressed on a, on a public agenda for the December fifteenth planning commission meeting. That item will be back in front of planning commission and then it will come back to this body based on their discussion accordingly, so. That does, thank you for that clarification, council member Demore. We will be, we were going to set a public hearing, as you recall, for December five. That will be delayed. We'll send it back to planning commission for their regular meeting in December, which is December fifteen, and then proceed accordingly from there.
Thank you for that point of clarification.
Thank you.
It was an error in process of not being put onto the agenda for discussion, so. Any other? I don't think, do we need, need to change that? I think it's kind of, will be in the amendments for this month, so it'll clarify it. Any other comments or questions? Other, do you have any comments or questions regarding the minutes? In November? Beginning now, I go to city clerk back for all.
Walker?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Demore?
Aye.
Shields?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes, motion to accept the consent agenda passes five zero. Now is the opportunity for miscellaneous public comments. You wish to address council, not the audience, but us. You would step up to the mic, give us your full name, full address, and you'll have a couple, few minutes to make comment to council if you have one. Is there anybody that wishes to speak to council at this time? Anybody online? No? Okay. Thank you. Now we're going to move to the city managers' updates and for that I'm going to turn over to city clerk Shane.
I need to catch that. So just quickly, really my big items that are in front of us, we're talking about tonight on this agenda, so I don't have a lot of updates. As we sit here today, but downtown management board did meet last week and did adopt the. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-seven strategic plan that you all have had a chance to review, so that was formally adopted at their meeting last week. Planning commission last week was canceled. The next meeting is December fifteen, as I just mentioned, and then the district library board has their regular meeting tomorrow night at five at the library. I wanted to, again, continue to push this out. This is obviously on our Facebook page, social media, website. Again, residents have, to the end of this month, we've had this open for the last thirty days for draft comments on our. Master plan for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan update. So we encourage folks to try to steer them to our website, drop off any comments, mail any comments, participate accordingly to provide your. Provide their feedback. Tanda will be providing a kind of an overview of the update at our next meeting for council. Couple of updates project wise, Solana's Mission Beach project is substantially complete. I don't know if anyone's had a chance to walk down there. We have a little bit of handrail that we need to complete, but other than that, the project is completed. We were thinking about a ribbon cutting. Until the weekend happened, so we'll likely just hold off and wait until things green up in the spring. Festival Park Shelter, the shelter right outside, we've just replaced the roof with a nice steel roof that was recently completed. We got a few things, we got a. Punch list items, a few punch list items that we need to wrap up, but that is substantially complete. And just to remind folks about our seasonal parking restrictions, start on December first and run through April first. And I'm, I'm new to Potaski, so this is new to me as well, so I don't. I'm sure our residents know what we, our policy, but essentially on-street parking. Restrictions will be ineffective during this time period where we'll look at. Odd number of address side of the street on odd numbered dates and the vice versa with even address. On even numbered dates. So that process will start again December first. Yeah, we'll look forward to that. Wanted to share our well wishes with our. Wastewater Treatment Plant Supervisor, Sherry, just retired. Last Friday was her last day after sixteen years of service. We had a nice luncheon for her earlier this month. And I will say she's really poured herself into her staff. Her staff are really well-trained, well-certified, above and beyond what the minimum requirements are. She's really. Been a wealth of information and really mentored her staff very effectively, so we certainly appreciate Sherry and and her dedicated years of service to the city. Few things on the horizon. This weekend, we have our holiday parade downtown. Light up the night, so a number of things associated with that in Pennsylvania Park, a lot of activities for families. To celebrate the season. Downtown looks beautiful with the the lights and the wreaths and the poles that are wrapped. It's the the snow, the first snow has really accentuated that. Almost looks like a hallmark card these days. Downtown is beautiful. And then a holiday open house on December second. That begins at six o'clock with a number of activities. We've encouraged folks to participate in that as well. One of the things I wanted to. Also thank staff. We had, obviously, it was interesting and this being my. um also thank staff, we had obviously uh it was interesting and this being my new uh my my first lake effect snow um event. And so I was asking staff, you know, what the what we need to gear up for and and how how we need to handle this and do I need to issue any sort of snow-related emergency or or typically when I was uh managing down in southeast lower Michigan, we would issue snow emergencies to get people off the the road, so our plows could go through and and clear roads and and uh I I'm I'm very comforted in the fact that this crew has been through this many times, and so they're they're well-seasoned. I I just wanna give them two of those to our crews that were out all hours of the night over the weekend. I thought they did an outstanding job uh clearing streets, clearing sidewalks around the city. Well done, and I know this is the first of of many events, but um I was very impressed with with uh how we ramped up and really in a way that we had a lot of folks off um deer hunting. And so it was all hands on deck. We have water and sewer employees, you know, um blocking streets, uh anybody that we could get with a CDL uh we were using and they were working, you know, twelve-hour shifts, so kudos to them. Well done. Any questions for me?
Are you giving the CDL?
I did uh one, I did drive with a a a snowplow driver when I was in. I know I could, I should say this publicly, but I've never been flipped off so many times by people that were shoveling the end of their um driveways as we were coming through with a front front plow like, sorry.
Was that you or driver?
Sorry, like, yeah, speed up.
When they went around the block to my house, I stopped him. I said, make sure you dump honey on the nest before he lives. Yes.
Question, thanks, Mayor Horn. I, do you know with the Parks and Recs master plan, is that, I need to dive into it myself yet, but um does that include the most recent survey that went went out? Does it incorporate?
Yes, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Any other questions for the city manager? Does the public have any questions for city council regarding city managers' updates for the month? There being the congratulations to Sherry too. I think city council expresses a big thank you to her for all she's done. I know uh I see her sometimes out on jobs even.
Yeah, I I know she'll be still a regular, um she'll drop into the facility quite often, I'm sure.
Okay. Next is old business, and it's the adoption of a proposed resolution of concurrence for the lofts of Lumber Square Brownfield Plan. For that, I will turn it over to city manager Horn.
I'm just gonna have uh Matt come up and just be available for any Q and A. Uh and obviously you've had the plan. Um Matt went through a presentation at the last meeting. Um so if there's questions, comments, feedback you'd like to provide, you know, this is your opportunity to to do so. Thanks, Matt. Uh ask council if they have some questions or do you wanna run through it first?
I know, I just uh have have, I think we ran through it before. This is again, I have a request for a resolution of concurrence by the
Okay.
City council for the Brownfield Plan, happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Wagner?
Man, what what's changed since the last time? But I believe there was at least one modification, is that true?
Yeah, the one item that was raised uh at the last meeting was related to the local brownfield fund and is highlighted in there is concerns about that management, and so we've included the Brownfield Plan provision that says all city taxes that are captured as part of the local brownfield revolving fund will be spent on city projects. So the rest of the pieces is similar to what it was. I mean, it's a lot more detailed than what was there before, but it's in the Brownfield Plan.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moore?
I have a number of questions, so interrupt me if someone else wants a turn.
We will.
I'm confident. So let me just walk through some of my understandings with Mac and then you tell me where I'm wrong.
But you're right.
Uh yeah, that'd be awesome too. So referencing table two point two, um pointing clarification.
Yeah, let's let people move to two point two.
It's my favorite part of the whole Brownfield Plan.
Right, yeah.
So just generally speaking, um the reimbursement to the city occurs if the greenway portion is undertaken, otherwise there's no reimbursement to the city.
That is correct, you're only reimbursed for those expenses that you make.
Okay. And then the percentages that we see represented there as between the city and the developer are those actual percentages or hypothetical percentages?
Those are hypothetical percentages, um based on the fact that, at least as I'm understanding, is the Greenway project isn't ready to go right away. We need to work for that, and so we had also the project is interested in getting those funds early on for their expenses. So we had a larger share for the project and then died us down to that, but that actual percentage would be subject to a development and reimbursement agreement between the Brownfield Authority, um the uh entity, the foundation entity, the owners, developers of the project, and the city. So we'd need to work that detail out specifically. This is an example of how that how those dollars would work.
Okay, makes sense.
Yeah.
So um following your advice or admonition at the last meeting about things to avoid when I ask you to be the devil's advocate. Um and that advice was, you know, don't act depending on future revenues. In that context, in your experience and broadly speaking, uh when should, not literally, but when should in context that greenway portion be undertaken in this scenario?
I think the minimum date would be at a time where we've used in other projects is eminent development or imminent development where financing is in place, a construction contract is in place. You know, with those two elements and all the permits and all the other kind of activities are done, so the ready is, project is ready to begin construction. That would probably, that would be the earliest date I might suggest, because then you have a pretty good idea that the project is gonna proceed to construction, especially if it's fully done. And we'll include that within the development agreement if that's if that's of interest is, you know, the evaluation of that of those project financing before you do that. Once a project is built out and the assessor identifies what that taxable value is, you're pretty much a certain, you know, share of those revenues they increase incrementally based on inflation, but you know what those revenues are and you can calculate the revenues there. So I would say the earliest date would be at the beginning of construction, where all the financing is in place and the construction contract is executed and all the permits are in place. And then the not the latest date, but the date they could be assured would be after the project is built out.
Okay, so there's no real actual limitation on the greenway start time then?
No. You can start that whenever you wish. I I will say technicality is to state what's a three-year limit on eligible activities. Um even if it's a long-term project, so we would have to go back and pretty standard procedure, request an extension of those uh periods if it's after that three-year, three-year date.
Okay. I have more questions, should I go on?
Sure.
Okay. So absent the greenway then, just for purposes of argument, all tax recapture goes to the developer.
Correct.
Okay, and for how long would that be then? Is that?
Well, I just kind of quickly estimated about twelve years.
Okay. Um and during that time period, then the city continues to receive existing tax revenues as defined, I think, by the end of December twenty twenty-two.
That's correct. There's an initial taxable value that's set as of the end of last year. You still receive the taxes based on that taxable value.
Okay, and then once again, uh on the hypothetical absent the greenway, those revenues then would increase following that twelve-year period. Is that right?
Uh the revenues are staying the same. Basically, the time the the developer is writing the check for the revenues, where they go would would be different. So up to that point in time, it'd be reimbursed for eligible activities after that time period and after the local brownfield fund, they go back to the taxing jurisdictions as they normally would.
Okay. All right. And if the greenway is included, like what portion of that would effectively be paid by this brownfield?
I revaluated uh up to a million dollars of capital, actually one-ten, because we put a a contingency in, uh excuse me. We put in uh a hundred and ten thousand for, excuse me, a million and a hundred thousand for design and then a fifteen percent contingency uh for that, so I think it's approximately adds up to about one point five or so, one point three. So that is the kind of maximum that could be reimbursed. The project may be two million, but you'd be able to include that allocation for reimbursement.
And when would that be available for the city to access?
That would be years. Well, that would, that would, in the way that this is structured, is for the first five years, it's predominantly to the developer and then it declines and that area increases to the city. But that again would be subject to a a conversation for the development and reimbursement agreement.
You had mentioned that it would end at twelve years.
Yeah, if there was no greenways project.
Right.
Then the the project would be paid out in twelve years and then we'd be done. What we've done here is, you know, you have two activities. Those would be figured out in what's called the TIF cascade, who gets the money and what percentage of it. So it would be available. It's a matter of negotiation about how that would work.
Okay.
So then my final questions had to do with this time period after the reimbursement is completed.
Mm-hmm.
And um trying to compare um stopping at that point or at some designated point. Uh let me, let me try to state this better. So if in two thousand forty-four this brownfield was ended at that point, um the full enhanced tax values could come directly to the city.
Your proportionate share, yes.
Proportionate.
Taxing jurisdictions including the city.
Exactly, and that would be fully within our control in terms of how to use that.
That's correct.
Okay, so then can you talk about the converse with it continuing beyond that reimbursement period, how that works?
Sure, absolutely. The activity one allows for reimbursement of those eligible activities and also an ability to capture additional taxes of the, actually during the capture, we haven't proposed that here, but after the capture is paid off, after the eligible activity obligation is complete for an additional five years to go into a local brownfield fund that can provide upfront capital for brownfield eligible activities uh in in that project, that actually the Brownfield Authority has a local brownfield fund now from the Petoskey Mini Manufacturing Project. But that brownfield fund provides support, and I think the the benefit of the reason that I included, you know, and supported is because you're really leveraging other dollars. The city is certainly contributing to that, but you're leveraging other dollars. The equivalent amount of state uh capture for environmental eligible activities will go into that fund and all of the other taxing jurisdictions. The city is on the total taxable, the city's about twenty-five percent. All the other taxing jurisdictions are about twenty-five percent, and the state is about fifty percent. So during that time that we capture the state taxes, we're leveraging seventy-five cents for the investment that that the twenty-five cents that the city is contributing. So it's really becomes becomes an economic development fund in essence for uh to be used to support projects.
So the decider, so to speak, of how that money is used is our whom?
That is the Brownfield Authority.
Okay, but that's where the provisor was entered that the mayor requested last time that that must be used for benefit of city of Petoskey.
Yeah, and it's understandable and reasonable that city dollars would would not go to, you know, some other area, and so that's where that provisor comes in.
Is is that brownfield um or it can be like a a grant funding source?
Yes, it could be grant or loan, and that's kind of up to the discretion of the project. Um often is used, you know, kind of set up for a revolving fund, often is used to help support brownfield eligible activities, and then a brownfield plan is completed for that and you can recapture and refresh that fund. So if it is, it able to be granted or loaned.
Do you know what that amount is beyond what would be the enhanced tax value portion that we'd have access to? Or not, excuse me, we would, that the brownfield revolving fund would have access to?
Yep, and these numbers look really accurate, but they're not. So these are projections based on what's gonna happen in twenty-four years. But, you know, we calculate about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars would be available within that brownfield fund for the five years of capture after that period.
But a portion of that would be enhanced tax value money, right, or wrong?
All of that is what I'm calling taxing incremental.
Yeah.
Tax increment. Um that all of that is taxing incrementally.
Okay.
Right.
Mr. Shields? Question I'm thinking is formulating the header now, the the sort of timing of the lengths. Would it, does that decided right now in this in the concurrent in agreement that's made out, or can that be um decided later on at at the, when when it wants, when we want to end it as a as a city, do we have that call in twelve years from now and fifteen, twenty-two years from now?
Yeah, it would be, it would depend on what what we're doing right now is creating this budget and creating that that uh provision and and allowance.
Okay.
And the time it takes to pay that off, if I'm understanding your question, is related to the actual eligible activities that are extended. Again, we have kind of conservative budget in here, so it will be lower than that. And the ultimate value of the property, how much taxes are gonna be generated. We've kind of made an estimate here, but it will, the assessment will be what it is. So that time period may adjust back and forth uh in in terms of the reimbursement process.
Okay.
Right now, we project, you know, about twenty-two years that it's paid off and then an additional five years for the local brownfield fund.
Got it, okay. What happens, what happens if the city in twenty-two years? None of us will probably be sitting up here. Maybe, I don't know. But if we're not here, can the city council at twenty-two years from now say we decided not to do this brownfield for the two thousand twenty, uh the twenty-two to twenty-seven year?
No.
Okay, so we're committing to city council of the future twenty-two years from now. How they are going, what's gonna happen to tax dollars for a five-year period of six hundred thousand twenty-two years from now?
Yeah, the six hundred thousand is the total.
Right.
About twenty-five percent of that is the city uh taxes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the Brownfield Plan allows for that.
Mm-hmm.
We'd have to come back and make that request.
Okay.
And then the Brownfield Plan, all the parties would need to agree to that.
Okay. So you say technically it's twenty-five percent, which means that really out of the six hundred, it's really a a hundred and twenty-five thousand, they're about hundred and fifty, yeah.
Roughly, I think.
Hundred and fifty, something like that.
I, I'm sorry, it's a little bit different because there's a smaller proportion of the share of the state because we have a limitation of the state. Um
Which you had said it was.
That actually would be, that actually, it it actually would be about two hundred and fifty thousand. And I can go into the details about that, but.
It's just that you had mentioned twenty-five, twenty-five and fifty.
Yeah, not really that. But the the stipulation is that we can really capture up to the amount that's spent on environmental eligible activities from the state.
Okay.
We estimated that share to be about a hundred and twenty-two thousand that the state would pay in.
Okay.
So that's all they're gonna contribute.
Okay.
A hundred and twenty thousand, the capture over the five years equals about five hundred thousand.
Okay.
And so the city's share of that would be about two fifty.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Moore?
Um so Matt, short of the full duration and post-reimbursement, is there another sweet spot you might identify as a consideration as well?
Yeah, I think, you know, I wanted to make one comment in terms of the of the local brownfield fund, and I certainly understand its nebulousness and and but I've kind of been in this long enough to see a lot of value to that, you know, I mean, I did projects twenty years ago and said I will never have to worry about that, and now this is an incredibly valuable tool uh for the communities in which they have that that capability. Now, the second thing is, is that in in this and talking about, you know, um the rate of share and spirit of cooperation, you know, we've included a million dollars that will be capturing from other local jurisdictions as well for the Greenways project. I think that's gonna benefit the city in that case, and so everybody's kind of contributing to that component as well. And so just, you know, the the concept of this collaborative nature to provide those investments and then everybody to be in on investments in the future to make that, I think, has some some merit, so I'll say that. I would say that the kind of one thing I think that you want to have as a minimum is the ability to make sure that you capture the state taxes that are there. Um and so, you know, that that would be, I would think would be the minimum that you'd want to consider is your your pro, and you have to capture pro-rata share. It's about fifty-five percent local and about forty-five percent state. So for whatever we capture on the state side, you'd want to capture that local because now you're you're quadrupling your money and doubling the local money.
Right.
That's really important.
And to do that, we would go through year?
It actually would be about two years of the local capture and about two years of the state capture. I mean, because this, there's a weird, another weird thing in this, state capture ends a little bit later. The reason is they're capturing fifty percent of the state education tax for the state brownfield fund. They're capturing three mills. But in the legislation, it said it wouldn't affect the pro-rata share. So because they're taking that those dollars off, it takes a little bit longer for the state to complete their obligations on the project.
Okay.
And so kind of if you look down way at the bottom there in that local brownfield fund, you'll see that that state And so kind of if you look down way at the bottom there in that local brownfield fund, you'll see that that state tax capture ends in twenty forty-six and then we're able to capture for a couple of years there. So it would be two years basically local capture and two years worth of state capture.
So twenty forty-eight.
Well, everything, everything would end, the local capture would end in twenty forty-five. Because that would be about that, that those dollars, hundred and fifty thousand dollars or so, that would match the hundred and two twenty, hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars of the state. So that would end and then we'd wait for the state dollars to come in and capture that.
Thank you very much for answering all my questions.
My pleasure. Or a a while ago, not too long ago, a couple, two years ago, um we had TIF brownfield, basically the same thing virtually. Um there were apartments up by the old Kmart. And they had a TIF agreement where they captured the funds for twenty years. Captured the funds and then come back last year, the year before and said, we need to extend the TIF because we have to put in new windows, new doors, new this, new roof, blah, 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 blah. My concern is that we don't have projects that are projects, I guess I'm talking to the developer now, that funds are not put away enough to plan for the rainy day when you need a new refrigerators and you need new windows and new doors because they came back and wanted twenty more years of of TIF money. So basically, we're not, we're still not gaining any tax dollars from that development. Though the uh developer ended up apparently spending all of it because we ended up having to say yes to that. And I don't think that that's puts the city in a good situation to have people coming back feeding off the the public trough, basically.
There's, there's probably a couple considerations to that is that brownfield really only deals with kind of subsurface activities, especially abatements, things of that nature. And so they can't deal, it doesn't support construction cost or any kind of remodeling cost or any of that. And so and any changes to this budget, if they would have to come back and say, hey, we have some more stuff to do, requires an amendment that is exactly the same process.
Okay.
So you would have to concur with it, the Brownfield Authority has to concur with it if it increases that budget. So what is here is here.
This here is what we're voting on.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Ms. Walker.
Um so mine were actually structural questions. The two buildings that have to be demoed is that I thought that some of that was going to be taken on by the previous owner.
I'll turn to Corey Andrews uh about that.
Yes, so the one building is down, the other building is partially down. I believe the foundations will remain, which are included in our brownfield work plan.
Okay, so the hundred and some thousand dollar cost would be for the demolition of the foundation and or whatever existent building might be there at the time of.
Right, yes.
And then my second question, if I may, Mayor.
Please.
Um is I know that the city had acquired from MDOT the right of way of the railroad tracks, and I believe that was in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one. And I didn't look to cross-reference, but I didn't know if the part of our capital improvement plan was to pave the section of the of the greenway, which would have been from Fulton Avenue until Fulton Street until Washington Street, that section. There's another section that I believe we acquired previously, which would be the Emmett Street section till Fulton, which is right in front of the Harbor Hall um development right now. Does anybody remember or is this something that we could look into for maybe?
Yeah, I could certainly look into that. I'm certain that it's included in the capital improvement plan. I'm not sure what year it lands in, but yeah, the the idea is to make that extension all the way down to this project.
Okay. Thank you, and I think that's it for me. Thanks.
This project provides reimbursement for those for those expenditures um from state and local sources. So instead of spending a hundred percent of whatever that you'd have to spend, you spend twenty-five percent in in the balances from the other taxing jurisdiction.
Got it, thank you.
Other questions, council? Do I have a motion? Ms. Walker.
I'd be happy to make a motion, Mayor, to adopt the resolution of concurrence with the loss at Lumber Square Brownfield Plan.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion from Ms. Walker and a second from Mr. Shields. Open up to council discussion for the discussion. Mr. Shields.
Well, I guess what's the next step after concurrence? Is that, and it goes to, like, the agreement gets strapped in?
Um it goes to the Brownfield Authority uh on November twenty-eighth for their consideration. And then there's a public hearing and the county board would would approve it at uh near December twentieth meeting.
That's right, thank you.
We have a couple of projects going. Uh and then um we do have to prepare a development and reimbursement agreement. There also is an activity when we're playing that is in a certain format that has to go to the state for their approval uh as well. And that's kind of the target of what we're trying to do because Los Alamos has a couple of other MEDC incentives they like to do all at the same time, so we're trying to get that there. So there'd be a development and reimbursement agreement um that we'll be preparing and working with Shane and staff on to uh to walk through that and that will come back to you at your December thirteenth meeting or a subsequent meeting there in January.
Thank you.
Is there any plans on when this project would possibly put a building up or a an apartment uh open for somebody? Um can you give us anything at all?
Yeah, our intent is to begin construction in late spring, early summer.
Okay.
And it'll be probably eighteen, twenty months construction. So around two years from now is when the building should be done.
Okay. Mr. Wagner.
I only want to thank you and my fellow council members for asking really good questions because I had a couple of concerns, but they've all been addressed. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion, council? Any other questions? Miss Demore?
Well, I'm just going to put this out here for purposes of conversation. So the one thing I'm looking at, and I don't know the answer, that's why I put it out there, is this difference between if this ends at the point of reimbursement, in which case we as a city have full control of that increased tax monies that we receive versus the entire, even your phone's talking back to me now, um the entire term where that, there is a period where those monies uh with additional access are then controlled by the brownfield revolving fund, which has to be used to the benefit of City Petoskey, plus that middle sweet spot that you brought up, where we just have access to leveraging state dollars. And I just guess I want to make sure we're all on the same page, we're all thinking the best option is the the full number of years, which is what I understand is contained in this motion as opposed to those other two.
Is, how long will it take? Is it necessary for this to be a twenty-year uh funding project for for the developer?
Um, no, they would probably prefer a little less, but the reason that it is extended to that extent is because of the Greenways allocation here. If it was just a developer project coming for their eligible activities, who would be estimated to be about twelve years of pay.
Oh, twelve years.
Yeah.
Shane, can we do it in five years? Is five years after that?
Do what? What are you asking?
The brown, to do the brownfields for us. Uh if if, can we shorten this twenty-year thing to cut off a few years? If it's, if it's really contingent on that the reimbursement for the developer, but it's reimbursement for the city for the brownfields, is it possible, if he says twelve years, do we need eight years to get the funding going for that?
My suggestion would be it's in the interest of the city to be fully reimbursed and to extend that period uh to that point because you're leveraging seventy-five percent funding from other sources. So I don't think it's in the city's interest to reduce that timeframe of capture for for your eligible activities, if that's what I understand you're saying.
But should we go twenty-five years, thirty years, forty, I mean. Why is the sweet sweet spot twenty and why isn't it fifteen or something like that?
Uh that is just our calculations and how long it will take to pay off the eligible activities with the assessed values that we're estimating at this point in time. So maybe less, maybe more, can I go past thirty? That's the maximum amount. Um but that's, you know, what what we're estimating. Any, you know, sort of reduction in saying that capture ends at twenty years would potentially reduce the amount of reimbursement uh that would happen in in that case for the city, I think.
Yeah, um Mayor, my man, Mr. Shields, thank you, Mayor. Um my response, Mr. Moore, would be that what Mac just said there is, I I see the, it, once the project, re-reimbursing projects for the developer comes through, then that we have opportunity to maximize all the reimbursement for the city. And at some point in there, we're, we're still maximizing the states and the other taxing districts uh contributions. But we're also, if the developers, we're we're then, their taxable value is we're we're able to, so the difference is, we're we're getting taxed by with the state assistance or we're or we're getting just the taxable value that was cut off. So so we're we're, this is a way to maximize the 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 other taxing districts. And and, yeah, I guess I'm not seeing the benefit of, outside of not having any control over all that.
That's the difference.
That's the difference.
Yeah.
But that's why, I guess I I'm, I I'm, I'm, I'm not, I have a strong feeling either way. I feel like that maximizing these uh these taxing jurisdictions, I I'm, I I would side on that, but versus the control.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anybody else on this discussing council? This public wish to express to council, we step up with your name and full address, you wish to speak to us? To be a nun? I'll take it to city clerk Beck for all.
Walker?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Demore?
Aye.
Wagner?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes. Motion passes five zero. Next to the adoption of proposals, you wish that would confirm the proposed special assessment role for the city? And that is uh turn that over to city manager Horn, who's probably going to turn it over to.
No, this is uh, this is uh step three of three. Um so as as you know, we've kind of stepped through this and and phases. Uh this last phase, we've sent out um or we've established the um uh assessments. Uh this is the public hearing um that kind of sets that, gives you the example of what those assessments look like, the total amount that they um accumulate to, and then a sample of a um special assessment invoice uh that goes out once this is adopted. So to my knowledge, and I'll ask city clerk, but I don't believe we've seen or received any comments on this since we started the process, so um obviously, the percentage sounds like a lot, but when you boil it down, it it ends up being, and I'm looking at Becky, but about seventy-five hundred. Yeah, total, so not not huge dollars um from an increase standpoint. Um so it's quite a, quite a lengthy process to to get us to this final step, but um this has been our routine. Um how we've kind of done it for many, many years. And so I think it's uh, it's obviously not new to our to our merchants and 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 small business owners. They understand and know the services that they receive due to this assessment, so any, any questions for either Becky or myself, we'd be happy to answer.
Slaughter.
Thank you, Mayor. I I just want to say thank you to Becky because I know this is so much information and to be able to assemble it and to be able to review and look at every property and like how much they're going to be assessed is is very helpful. So thank you for all of that. I did have a question about one area on page.
Go slow.
Okay. Actually, this is page sixty-one from last week's or last um meetings. Document, it's Waukesha.
So the very last.
The very last.
So the very last page, thank you. And there's only three properties on Waukesha Street. And the one that I am concerned about and have a question about is four fourteen Waukesha Street, it's Little Bay Cottage LLC. And it's, there's a note to the right that says residential begins in December of twenty sixteen. So this property used to be a multifamily unit. The City of Petoskey leveraged MEDC funds for the rehabilitation of this property. It has since been turned into a short-term rental. So it's an Airbnb advertised in downtown Petoskey, which is qualified, that's a zone that's allowed to have short-term rentals. But it's being treated as a residential as opposed to a commercial building. So that was my question.
Personally, I feel uh short-term rentals is a business. It should be taxed as a business and be it as any business downtown, that's a business that's happening in that building in the downtown district.
We may have to get a legal interpretation on that. I don't, I don't know what what options we have.
What's on the first floor?
It's all, it's seven, I know it very well.
Which building is it and what's on the first floor?
That is the alley we will go um behind that lot right there. And then on the first floor, it's some office space for them, but also um an Airbnb, a condo or Airbnb. I was, yeah.
On the first floor?
Yeah.
I thought we had to have commercial on the first floor.
The building next to it has commercial on the first floor, that investment.
Why doesn't the next building, why doesn't this building have demand commercial on the first floor?
I'm for financialism, the first floor, uh one next.
Yeah. So if I buy two buildings, I can take one and do it with uh first floor residential, but the second, because I tell you that's my commercial building, that overrides for the second building?
I'm going to tell you, I think they have some office space on the first floor for the um Airbnb business. I have actually been in there.
But if that's like, but if it's a commercial, if it's an office building, are there other places that we charge office buildings, office services downtown with with with
Yeah.
But this has zero, zero, zero.
That makes a really good point.
Yeah.
Yes, I agree with her, yes.
And this is, may I, if I may, Mayor?
Please.
I I was concerned about this. As soon as I found out that the city like leveraged state financing for rehabilitation of a really important property and then the people turned around and within a certain amount of time, they were held to the standard of it being like rental housing, interim rental housing. And the minute they had the opportunity and they weren't obligated, they totally flipped it and turned it in to a a business. And I just think it's the most disingenuous thing and I don't know. Look, I, well, now is, if it's disingenuous, that's just my own opinion, but like, how do you prevent that from happening?
Mr. Moore.
Having a policy, yes.
So I think the question is basically twofold. Is there a way to reassess this business for for what, what would that look like? It it's obviously, it would be, perhaps it would fall under the auspice of the um the twenty cent per square foot of usable first floor space. And then second floor space would be usable, second floor space at the five cents per square foot. I just, I think that that is that just maybe is perhaps an an oversight and and the the assessor, perhaps because they had that residential um from December twenty sixteen, but as soon as. And the, the assessor, perhaps because they had that residential um from December twenty sixteen, but as soon as. I would guess, probably twenty twenty, they. So you could retroactively charge them for last year's assessment and this year's.
If I could just chime in, um, because I do the licensing for short-term rentals. And this four-one-four Waukesha Zoo, right, four-one-four, they actually are licensed three units. So maybe it is an oversight, maybe they don't have the actual office space anymore, like they may have when they were that rehabilitation grant. And that's what I was going to say when Z explained it to a T where you guys approved that, and they had a certain amount of times that they had to. And maybe there was a business in there at the time, and they had to keep it under those rehab rules, and then you're right, as soon as it got past that point. Because it was next door, I believe, Encore, I think Crest owned it, Crest Enterprises, and then they had the opportunity to sell it. And then the new owners immediately turned it into short-term rentals. So again, I can't speak that there is or is not office space, but I can confirm that there's three licensed units.
Upstairs.
I can't confirm if it's upstairs or downstairs, this unit, one, two, and three. And there are different doors, and you look, there is one ups, like, you know, stairs upstairs, and then the main floor too. So anyway, disappointed clarification for licensing purposes, but.
Well. I have issue with not. Being put on this role.
Yeah, we can, we can put it on the role, just with your direction, we'll add it. Do, do we need to have a, a set, a policy or listing for? Uh.
But I think when we're directing this right now, I think it should just be put on the list. You're being charged for the first floor, period. If they want to fight it, they can fight it and do it, you know? But I believe that we should stay consistent. I don't want to see people buying two buildings in these, I, I buy two buildings, keep one as my main office thing and rent the other. At, out, next door and say, well, it's, it's a rental on the first floor because I own the other building. I mean, that's the same thing as what they're doing, basically, or were doing. I was involved with this one, which was approved, it was seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Was approved to them for uh rehab of three apartments, I thought there were four, but. Uh, it did happen. Uh, City Council approved it, went through the planning commission. Um. But I'm disappointed that it's. And I'm glad you pointed that out, Lindsay, because I see that as a.
Mayor, if I may?
Please.
Um, I think, so that kind of brought on further concerns, like with these other Oprah properties that, one at the. Three sixteen and three eighteen Lake Street, that second and third floor that's already an Oprah property that was already approved. Would there be any stipulation to maintaining that affordability, or it could it continue to be long-term rentals versus? You know, at what juncture, or can you put in some kind of clause that would, or a policy that would help protect and ensure that those. That those properties with that public, public investment remain long-term rentals?
I don't know, that, that doesn't sound. Feasible, but.
Well, and I don't know if the Oprah is some kind of um attachment or to that kind of um future.
Thing with the apartments were, at a certain amount of time, you had, they had to keep the rent at a certain level. And as soon as that Oprah was done. Or if somebody moved out, then they could charge whatever they wanted for rent. But I think it was con- ro- controlled more or less at first. We, I believe it was five years. Five years rent control.
Okay.
Mr. Moore?
I just think it would be very, very helpful to get the advice of legal counsel.
Yeah.
And how we can accomplish this, because I kind of hear that we're all on all fours with this.
Mm-hmm.
We've got this goal to try to get affordable housing. And when we're giving financial benefits, to me, it seems like there should be some way to develop a policy. Again, with the advice of legal counsel, that assures that these commitments are followed. As we would hope or expect them to be.
That totally support your feelings on that. So where do we go, Shane, for this, can we, uh?
We can adopt and, and with the addition of that address, be added to the role.
Okay. If they wish to. I don't know, you talked of retroactive, I guess.
Yeah, I would not. Going forward.
Let's just put a little extra bill in there.
You can deal with.
Just to re- kind of confirm what Sarah Beck was saying in terms of the licensing, a vacation home rental agency. With four rentals. So maybe that office is like the first floor, but.
We can do, yeah.
Uh, do you wish to approve this as stands with the understanding that staff will uh update? For fourteen Waukesha Zoo Street? Please make a motion.
Uh, so moved as set forth in the agenda packet with the addition that. The property at four fourteen Waukesha Zoo Street will be revisited relative to its assessment.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mayor.
I have a motion from Mr. Moore, and a second from Ms. Walker, any other discussion, Council?
One other point of discussion, Mayor.
Yes, please.
Your, your, your comment, and I think asking Becky about that first floor requirement that it be commercial. We had discussions when we were talking about the Darling Lot and different designs a few weeks ago, that it was kind of outward facing from. Downtown shopping area, that that might be okay, so that, that piece of it, I think is a separate. Ultimate, so I don't.
I think that's a separate issue.
That was, that was, thank you. I did not see that, I do read it, I don't forget. Okay. Um, I, that did go by me, I did not read it back, when I, when I looked at it, there are rates from time to time. That change in the district, and we do not, and we caught them in the past, but this is, and I totally agree with this, that this should be. Flipping in the shopping bag under plodding.
Yeah.
You know, it should be assessed. So, thank you for that.
So just so you know, there are four license.
Mm-hmm.
Two thousand and one, and the last one was just this year in March.
Don't we do assessments for residential and second, third floors?
No.
No, no.
No assessment for second and third floor residential, we do if it's vacant, however, is that right?
No, it's residential, we don't.
Okay.
Uh, there is, there is a little bit of residential, like, in the, in the district, but it's rather than probably going to that floor.
Okay.
A few little, um, decisions are on topic.
Any other discussion, Council? I take it to the public, does anybody wish to speak to the public regarding this? Hello? And there's nobody up there either, so I'm going to go to City Clerk, Beck for all.
Demore? Aye. Walker? Aye. Shields?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes. Motion passes five zero, Becky, thank you. Ms. Walker, thank you very much.
I've always been pet peeved, actually, that property.
I, I was, I would, would just say, if you do see something that you question. You can always reach out to me ahead of this meeting, if I can get any background information to you. That would be helpful, that way you can get your questions answered very quickly, we can do some background and be ready for this discussion, so if you see something. Certainly reach out, and we can come prepared with, with any sort of. Research or data to help uh make that decision flow a little bit.
Yeah, I think to like, like sidestep you. Miss something, but like, I, this was this afternoon when I was doing my second revisions, I'm actually nap resting and looking at all the properties, like. Driving across restaurants, all of them, but some of them, but this one in particular was just, wasn't, was a big red light, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
No, no. We all set? Yes.
Well, what I forgot to mention was this invoice that was attached. I just wanted to say that I, I, again, I'm new to this, and that little explanation that was done on the billing, I thought was great. Um, to explain to people, like, a little short explanation of why they were being charged and how, I thought that was a good thing, thanks.
Next, it's further discussion, possible adoption of the city proposed two thousand twenty-three annual budget. I'll turn it over to City Manager Shane.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, obviously, we went through the presentation last meeting, um, we have not received any. Um. Formal feedback from folks uh on the budget, this has been out since uh the end of October. Um. Obviously, there's been no changes from the last um, the last meeting, so it is in front of you. For potential consideration and adoption. And I will entertain any questions, or if you need me to run through anything from the presentation, we can certainly pull that up again. Um, or clarify any other comments you may have at this point.
Okay, Council, do you have any questions regarding the budget that we've gone over a few years, times or so? Uh, maybe more, Ms. Walker?
Good question, or just a, a point of interest, um, I learned quite a bit, um, in this last kind of um revision or the. Um, in my, you know, in my studying the budget for this year, and that the electric fund. Is actually also a fund that we, we will borrow money from occasionally for other projects, so that was very interesting to me, so. Thinking about a future of, um, well, the example that was given in the electric fund is we are still, um. The electric fund is being reimbursed from the construction of the public safety uh building in Bay Harbor.
Yes.
So I was, I guess my question is, like, big picture, future things, if there was ever. Say, for example, it was determined that, you know, a housing project, and we wanted to put skin into the game. Would that be a potential, like, place where you, that the city could potentially borrow from if it was an agreed-upon project that. Passed all the, all the legal rigmarole or um, and council's approval, is that? How, how do you use the funds for the electric fund for construction of, of buildings that would either be publicly owned buildings or. Skin in the game for a private development, public-private development?
I would just be leery of doing that on a regular basis, I think for, for special, maybe one-time uses here and there. Loaning out of that fund is, is fine, I. I think you have to be careful of what that could do to potential rates, we all pay. Um, our electric uh bills, and potentially if that fund gets into a situation where we're. We're on the lower side, and we have to do a rate correction, what I like to use that money for is if we indeed need it. I'll just throw out like eight percent, ten percent rate increase, we can buffer that by using fund balance to, to offset some of that. Uh, some of those charges, so that way it keeps it. It keeps our rate increases down, um, and we can use it within that fund itself, but obviously, that's a policy decision of this body. Um, I think we would need to get our auditors involved to see um how that potentially would look, and I'm assuming that happened when we did the. Public Safety West facility, um. But yeah, that, that fund is in a, in a strong financial position. Um, when you look at using your internal funds, your funds that within. Uh, our local control versus going out to the bond market or, or any other. Uh, location where you're paying market rate interest, obviously, that's, that is much more attractive using that type of funding, but. I would just be leery of how that potentially sets you up for any sort of uh rate increases if you don't have that buffer in place.
I mean, at some point, that was decided, that the public safety building was ready of. All the hoops and things that you would have to jump through to, for that, but that makes. What you said makes sense, because obviously, that would be a very tangible public good, that you would be using the offset for.
Yes.
For not having to raise the rates.
Yeah.
And the same would, I would assume would be for the water and sewer fund, which that one has gone through a. A somewhat significant rate increase over the years incrementally.
I don't think that was used, though, that was used for.
I don't think it's.
Infrastructure. Was not used for like public safety.
Right, right.
It, it was totally for water, sewer.
Right. But of the two, of the sources of funds, those two are definitely the.
Strong.
The healthiest, and that would probably have to do with being an enterprise fund as well, in terms of owning our own utility.
Yes, enterprise and proprietary fund, that way, um, yeah, during the, there was something prior to the public safety too. Were there two public safety loans that went out?
Was it an apparatus, or?
From, yeah, from, which it's, it's perfectly legit and everything, it's, it's.
But we tried to keep that into the public, public domain or.
Sure.
Yeah, within the city.
Yeah, rather than outside to private commercial stuff.
Right. Okay.
I will say, as you all know, um. Infrastructure costs are skyrocketing, undergrounding utilities is very expensive. It's certainly a commitment that this body has made going forward, and that's, that is certainly something that we will continue to do, that is. Extremely expensive, and so having healthy fund balances help us to do those infrastructure improvements. Um, and, and be in a position to do those improvements.
And also, I'm sorry, but also I may fail, concludes, forgive me, Tina, um, and that, that also, that the unaccrued, un- unaccrued. Liability, I'm sorry, unfunded accrued liability, how am I pronouncing that wrong? U A L?
You got it.
So six hundred thousand this year is coming from a combination of the DPW enterprise funds and general street fund. That's where the unaccrued liability, and am I saying it correctly?
It's basically the pension and return.
Yeah.
Medical funds.
And.
That we are responsible for.
Right, and that's interesting, it doesn't come from the general fund, it comes from DPW's enterprise funds.
It, it has in the past, this year, with, with your feedback, um, we had to kind of. Get a little more creative and, and narrow down the, the budget a little bit, so we, we've taken that. Out of general fund and, and only use the enterprise funds um to make that extra payment.
Sure, okay, thank you, that was, I just wanted to highlight those points.
Thank you, good, good points. Mr. Moore?
So this is an extension on the utilities topic, um, when we look at the paragraph here titled Resolution Adopting Budget. And it says in part, the proposed resolution would. Um, authorize negotiation with an establishment of certain rates for electric utility customers in response to ongoing utility industry. Restructuring efforts, and so my question there is, what's the meaning of that, and would that discretion? Impact uh rates at all, please?
Shane?
Yeah, I think a- as we talked earlier, this, this is really to allow us to be flexible as market conditions change. And we need to be able to purchase uh through our um agency, Michigan Public Power Agency. To get, enter into purchase agreements as needed, because this is market-driven in many cases, so we need to have. That flexibility to be able to purchase um additional power and enter into those agreements. Um, as needed, um, so this gives us that latitude to be able to do that and, and kind of move. Uh, nimbly as, as quickly as possible to be able to do that, and enter into those agreements while the market is uh attractive.
Would it impact rates?
No, no. But the, electric rates are not changing in this twenty-three budget.
Right. And then my second question, are the rates and charges that are attached there, if you could just maybe talk about. The basis for these changes, since even though the differences are very small, these are things that impact. People in the city directly when they have to pay fees, so I was curious, the basis for this, these increases.
Yeah, I think anytime we are looking at. Revenue, obviously, tax, taxes are the, our main driver of, of revenue for the city along with um. State revenue sharing, we do get a, a little bit of revenue from rates and charges that we pass on to our customers. And residents, um, so we need to make sure that we're looking at all the rates on an annual basis, which, which we try to do. Um, I'm, I'm a big fan of small incremental increases versus sitting on something and then deciding, wow, we haven't done this for ten years. We need, we need substantial increases at that point. So looking at this on an annual basis, understanding um inflation, you, you saw the email that went out today. Um, inflation, you know, you saw the email that went out today from our assessor, you know, seven point nine percent. Um, so that means obviously our personnel costs are going up, our benefit package is going up. So making sure that the folks that are supplying these services. You know, we're 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 taking that into account as we're passing those fees on. So making sure that we're attentive to that. How our rates are, or how our um fees are going up, our cost to perform this service uh is going up. If if you notice under. Some of these under department are parks and rec, many of these are non-resident um increases. So. All the shelter rentals, these are all non-resident increases. None of the resident uh rates have changed. Um, really trying to, we have a lot of. Uh, which which we're a tourist based economy here, so we want to be very attentive to that, but. For instance, on our on our ball fields, when we have a lot of tournaments coming to town. That takes a lot of our staff time, a lot of prep time. And we're really, you know, we're only increasing it ten dollars uh per model, but. Just making sure that our we're covering our costs here. Uh, again, as our as our labor costs go up, just being attentive to that. And make sure that we're 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 changing with that and then passing that, especially. In these cases, all of these are are non-resident uh fees that are increasing in parks and rec.
Mr. Moore.
Then just one additional follow-up. You referenced the assessor and first I'll note that email came in last night at ten thirty, so he was working late. Um, but in any event, um, I just want to confirm because of what that email stated. Um, that that rate of five percent that the assessor was saying we can use is indeed what was incorporated in our budget. As opposed to the seven point nine percent.
Yeah, we knew based on how things were looking that we would likely be capped at the five percent rate. So that's that's where the budget is is built. Um, and this, again, I'm not, I'm not gonna beat on the headly horse anymore. Um, we could really um realize seven point nine percent or whatever that rate of uh inflation is and. And that's just not a Petosky thing. It's all Michigan local uh units are capped. And and so that. I haven't sat down and calculated what that difference means from five to seven point, seven point nine to five, what what we're losing there, but. I mean, it it's it's, I, yeah. So yes, to answer your question directly, you, the budget is built on the cap to five percent.
Thank you.
The city can override that, can they, by public vote?
Not.
Yeah, you can. You have to go to an election, but yeah.
Right, through the city. Does any of you have any other questions about the budget or do you um? Like to vote for Mr. Wagner?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three budget.
So I have a second. Mr. Moore, we've got a motion from the. A second from Mr. Moore. This is probably still. Sorry, nothing? Yes, we didn't go that week today. Anybody online? Online. When you go to the city. Back for.
Wagner?
Yes.
DeMoor, right, Shields?
Yes.
Walker, yes, Murphy.
Yes. Most impressive. Thank you for the staff.
Yeah.
Audrey.
Yeah, Audrey, Al, uh Sarah, I've did a lot of. And all of our department heads. Uh, this is, this is a heavy lift for many of us to get us to this point and. Obviously, it's a very critical document for for you. I'm I'm anxious and and uh. To hear your comments and feedback on how we can improve the process because I'm certainly not one to. Sit on my hands and say we have this all figured out. So um, I'm I'm anxious to hear from you on on how we can uh improve.
Just as the review of the capital improvement plan that you guys have requested a more in-depth process. I'm sure we can do a more in-depth process with this, but we'll all start earlier next year, okay? So that we aren't a deadline thing of, oh my gosh, it's pass or die, okay? So thank you to council for the great questions. You guys have done your homework. This is the first time we've really had council that has really done their homework. With specific questions, which is, that's your job. Thank you. Next, move with this. The bachelor proposal that would approve. July and December board of review date flexibility, I turned that on. Our city managers.
It's easy for you to say. Our new assessing consultant asked for consideration for flexibility as. As we read the charter language, um. The March Board of Review is is listed in the charter on on when exactly, um. We need to meet, which in in March, it's the second Monday in March. Uh, but it does not tie our hands for scheduling other times in March, which. Which we're looking into. So. This resolution doesn't address March, but I'm what I'm getting at is you had asked about. Our assessor being available for March and there was a little bit, I think it caught him off guard a little bit. The flexibility that we think we have is that the first. The organization or the first meeting, the second Monday in March is set in charter. However, we can have additional meetings in March where our assessor would be available. And that's what we're gonna work toward having a presence uh for our board of review in March. The resolution funny tonight, um, July and December board of review meetings are not, um. Our charter is silent on those uh meetings, so. We believe that gives us the flexibility to um consider other dates, other days of the week in those, um. So the way the statute reads, um, for multiple units that, um. For consultants that have multiple units that need that flexibility, that the statute, uh, Public Act one twenty-two of two thousand and eight. Allows for alternate uh July and December board of review dates. So. Um, this resolution kind of gives us that latitude to to have those flexi- have that flexibility. As you know, our consultant is in um eleven, oh no, is in twenty-two, twenty-three different jurisdictions. So we need to have that flexibility to provide uh to our assessor. So this resolution. Provides that flexibility that is needed for for him to be present and available.
Any discussion or possible motion? Miss Walker?
I do have a question. So just to clarify, so we, the board review. Sounds the assessor will still meet on the Tuesday after the first Monday in March. And then there will be the flexibility of scheduling said assessor at a different time in March and perhaps July and summer.
That's correct.
Got it.
Yes.
So the board review will still meet as an entity, just it won't be with the assessor and it'll be with you and you and you.
Right.
And others.
Right. And I I think we need to obviously. Think about how that looks. I don't know, and that that might, this might be a legal question too. Can we set the? The meeting for, just like it says in charter, second Monday in March. Ha- have it, close it, and then then have the the actual sessions, the the, what is it, twelve hours? That we have to have, um, set that later in March so we can have a presence. That'll that'll be clarified, obviously, as we get closer to to March, but. Um, but hearing you, our consultant heard you that. Having a presence at the March Board of Reviews is important, so we, they will make that happen.
Thank you.
Mr. Shields?
I'd make a motion to uh approve the resolution providing flexibility in the scheduling for the July and December port review.
Support.
Shields.
Yes.
DeMoor?
Hi.
Walker?
Yes.
Murphy.
Yeah. You don't look like Terry.
Thank you.
The doctor of the, next is the doctor of the post on the mission of a head reaseneed as an official city parliament. For that, I'm turning it over to city manager Horn as well.
Thank you, Mayor. As I've, I've, as I have done a um kind of a review of our personnel policies, procedures. Um, certainly, we want to remain um competitive and attractive to not only just um. New folks coming in, but um retaining our own folks. So obviously, everyone starts looking around what holidays you get, what holidays don't we get? And as I've, as I've looked at that. Um. New Year's Eve was not a holiday that was listed uh as an official uh city, city observed holiday. As I've talked to staff. It is a fairly slow day here at City Hall. I'm, I'm a huge proponent of uh work-life balance and make sure that we are attentive to our staff. When we look at opportunities to provide quality. Uh, family time, extended family time and those long weekend opportunities. I think for my uh determination that that uh pays huge dividends, both for our mental health, our physical health. Um, so anytime that um there's an opportunity, I think to at least explore. Options that really won't have a huge or very little budgetary impact. It's just gonna be a day that we're we're off or not here. Um, I think that that's something that we need to consider and I certainly appreciate your consideration, um. For potentially adding that as a as a city uh holiday going forward.
One question, the snow will still be plowed though, right?
Yeah, a- absolutely. Our, our, our collective bargaining groups, they observe, um. Holidays on the actual day that they're actually working, but the show will go on, the snow will be plowed, um. Uh, people will, yeah, that's. So. We just hope, we will hope for for no snow, uh, on New Year's Eve.
That's the big ball drop. So Don, I heard you, you're sitting on this, city is very active.
And you can do fireworks that day too. So, moving right along. Do I have a motion?
So moved. I second the motion.
I have a motion from Mr. Moore and a second from Mr. Shields. Any other discussion?
I support all the reason Shane said to do this. And I think our city workers, our staff are so important and. Um, it may be a small piece, but it's really important.
Well, you brought this up to me. I said, it was on the agenda. City council is gonna support this all the way because we support. Your decisions and your staff and our city workers, which are outstanding, second to none. So I go to. See, I had a problem and I had for a hundred, six years, a hundred and forty-four meetings. I looked over and said. City clerk pair, so that's why I made this time. A hundred and forty-four meetings times five, six times. So it's about seven, eight hundred times. So I'm now gonna try and get this correct. I turn it over for uh city clerk back. For all.
DeMoor?
I.
Shields?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes. Last on the agenda before city commerce. I will ask you to pull out on the Michigan Department of Environmental State, the Great Lakes of Energy Water Research Division's uh. Grant request for two thousand twenty-three proposals. I turn it over to city manager Horn.
Thank you, Mayor. I I should have in my uh city manager report included the uh. Trails Council uh community conversation that many of you attended. Um, certainly appreciate that. Um, it's something that on a regular basis now monthly, we've been. We've been meeting as a, as a small committee to try to to generate some momentum for this. Obviously, this is a multifaceted project. This is not simply, as we mentioned at the conversation, this is not simply. Putting an asphalt trail back. This is restoring a slope that has failed. This is a. A huge project, maybe once in a, uh, hopefully, once in a career, once in a lifetime project. So we're not having to deal with this again, hopefully, but so we want to make sure we get it right. There's a lot of. Players involved, a lot of partners that need to uh. Uh, help us achieve this goal of restoring the wheelway in its original location. So we have to. Lift up every rock, uncover every um opportunity to to explore, um. Ways to get financing. This is, as I mentioned, uh, going to be very expensive. Um, to the tune of, uh, when we looked at our partner, uh, band, uh, who's really done. Um, been involved from from day one on our, on our. Wheelway restoration project, exploring the the top portion and now. Really want to dive into what that bottom portion could look like. So they've estimated. And we've asked them for this information. What would it really take for us not just to have a schematic of? The the wheelway rest restored at its location, but to have bid ready. Um, documents in place. Um, what does that look like cost-wise for you to do this? And. They've, they've crunched some numbers. This is still somewhat of a. Uh, loose target, if you will, but they have come up with a million dollars to get us to the point where we're ready to go out to bid. Uh, for this project. So when we look at this grant opportunity that there's almost just over fourteen million dollars of. Of funds available in this high water infrastructure grant program. We have had some conversations with the state, with Ego. We've kind of ran through this project. They feel like it potentially. Uh, checks the boxes. Um, their recommendation was really to. Ask for what you need to get you to bid ready documents. If we can get eighty percent of that cost covered in the grant. Um, you know, I said it in my email, you 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 miss every shot that you don't take. So. Um, we we might as well put our best foot forward, in my opinion. And and ask for what we think we need and and we can obviously adjust as needed and. Even the state said that this is gonna be a process that carries through till after the first of the year. So if we need to. Tweak numbers, get when we so- solidify things, we can certainly do that in our application going forward, but. Part of the application process is we need an authorizing resolution to actually submit the grant. To to start that process. So this kind of gets us, um. Checks that box. We obviously need to complete the application. It needs to be submitted by November thirty, which is why I had to add this. At the last, uh, and I apologize, I do not like to do that, uh, but short of calling a special meeting, um. This was kind of, uh, um. What I needed to do. So again, I apologize for doing that. I don't like to do that, but.
It's good.
Any, any questions, comments, um, direction that you'd like to provide would be, would be well received.
Need a motion on this?
I do.
I thought so. First, you want to do discussion or a motion?
I'm discussion, so whatever you.
Your discussion.
Do I have a motion? Like to make a motion to uh approve. The, um, the grant for the state high water infrastructure. Approve the state high water infrastructure grant, program proposal.
I'll support.
I have a motion for Mr. Shields. I have a second from Mr. Wagner, uh, discussion council, Mr. Moore.
Yeah, I have no objection to this whatsoever, but I just want to make clear on the record, at least for my part. That we don't have the results of a feasibility study yet. And I worry we're getting a little beyond our skis, not in doing this, but in discussions. Um, because as fiduciaries of of funds and responsible for property, et cetera. We don't know what this feasibility study is going to say. I hope it says something great that we can do this. But it's possible it could come back and say it's gonna cost an enormous amount of money or it's gonna fall into the lake again. I hope it doesn't say that. But I just want to make sure that for my part in voting yes on this, which I intend to do. Um, this is all contingent for me on the outcome of that feasibility study.
I I would think this, the staff would. Incur with that entirely, they're they're not, if it's not a feasible project comes back, we're not gonna take the money for. Something that we we can't spend it on.
Right.
Right, and I'm not trying to be Debbie Downer and predict that outcome, but just.
And 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 Ben has been obviously very engaging throughout the whole process, they they've obviously put their eyes on it, they had a crew out. Last week in the nastiness that was going on, which I was shocked, they had a boat out doing hydrographic work uh on the shoreline. Um, so I know that they would be very um forthcoming and say. You know, if it wasn't feasible, they're gonna let us know, you know, at the front end, they're they're not gonna go through a a million dollar engineering. A thing to to then say, well, this this can't be, this can't be constructed, so we're we're in tune with them for sure.
Right, and I didn't intend to imply their shame, it's just that some of the dialogue around this. Has sort of missed the, you know, we don't have the results of the feasibility study yet, and I just wanted that to be out there.
Yep, thank you.
Public discussions, yes. Any other discussion, Mister Shields?
Mayor, um, Mayor Horn, this is, so this is, this is awesome, and it's great to bring this here, um, and definitely will support it. Did a extra twenty percent, is that something this, like a spark grant, that also seems to. Be very aligned with this type of um engineering and design study proposal, can that, uh, is that something that's also being pursued? Can that fill out the um the twenty percent, or is there, would the state not want us pursuing to grant at the same time?
No, we we have every intention of pursuing the spark grant as well, and uh if if we can. I don't know the rules, if we can offset our match with another grant, but what I would say is. It's likely that our our match, our twenty percent, or two hundred thousand, in this case, we will. We will be ready to to go to our partners, and and uh. Certainly, I think that's gonna be a an easier pill to swallow, if you will, versus, you know, the entire million dollars. As we all can know and understand, I did have a a meeting with um the county administrator uh today. And and we talked briefly about the county's um allocation to other jurisdictions in Emmett Emmett County. So we will be getting uh fifty thousand dollars that that would be matched by our our ARPA funds. To kind of build on that a little bit, and potentially, that's that's a a use that we could use that resource to help. Uh, offset our match as well, so I think there's a number of things that we can explore on how we how we meet our match obligation. But certainly, that's a, that's an easier target to hit versus if we didn't have this in place.
Other comments or questions, Council? If not, I turn it over to City Clerk back parole.
Shields.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Demore.
I.
Walker.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes. Most of the passes five zero. Now it's time for. City Council comments, and I'll go to Ward four, Miss Walker.
Re-election, I was just doing.
Congratulations.
Since our last meeting, so thank you to all the um, the um, city staff. As well as the numerous volunteers and poll watchers and all those good folk doing good civic duty, so. Um, from the sounds of it, the, everything went um seamlessly and was very well organized and. Um, just a true testament to how democracy functions on a local level, so I I thank everybody that participated in that. And both voters and staff and volunteers.
Thank you. Ward three, Mister Wagner.
Thank you, Mayor, I was told I could read an email, I won't go through what Shane has, it's from my neighbor Roger Tallman. Who's in a multi-tenant dwelling at four fourteen West Lake Street, and one of his neighbors, who's in Florida, because their house was destroyed. Um. Their power was turned off today, and there was a concern that what happens if somebody's not notified, their power goes off. The water, you know, the water pipes freeze and now there's damage in the whole unit. I'm happy to send this, that, and and I sent it to Shane, it's it's as a follow-up, just a, I know that the notification process, we're so compassionate with people. We do notify them, this may have been a one-off idea where that happened, but I just wanna bring it to everyone's attention that, you know, whatever, whatever it takes. And I, I'm not even looking for a comment, we can, we can follow up with it.
Well, since you brought it up in public, I think it's only fair to allow Shane to make a comment.
Yeah, I I was alerted to that as well, um.
As was I.
And and I I can't get into the specifics of that particular, I know I've I've talked with our our uh our billing folks. Uh, we did follow normal procedures as far as uh emails and um. Mailings uh that went out, I understand that that um resident is not there currently. I'm not sure if if forwarding did not occur, or what happened from that standpoint, but. There was notices that went out, um unfortunately, it doesn't appear like they received those notices, so we did. Um, post this, the shut-off today, it was shut off, I I talked about our procedure for winter shut-offs. And make sure that in a in a condominium development, uh, it's not as critical. Uh, because there's other folks using the facility and um, the the idea of pipes bursting is less likely. Um. Uh, in a, in that type of development, however, in on a normal residential development, we would actually shut the water off, hold the meter. And so there would be no likelihood of any pipes bursting and um in that situation, so.
We phone call people, do we contact them, not just by email or letter, but do we call them?
No.
No, I don't think we call them.
No, we do not, we have quite a few that are on the list each month. So, but um.
But how many shut-offs can I ask, do we have?
Today, we usually narrow down based on whether, you know, if it's too hot in the summer, you know, we cancel, if it's too cold, we cancel in the winter. Today was. Forty-two, thirty-eight or forty-two.
I don't know how many total.
I don't know that.
How many accounts?
Oh, how many customers?
Five thousand four hundred and forty-four.
From the budget, yeah. From the front of the budget, how many customers, yeah, so.
I mean, it's not, certainly not anything we like to do, I'd rather not have any shut-offs, um, but. You know. Unfortunately, that's. We're providing a service, and obviously, we've expended resources to do that, um. It's unfortunate in this particular case that some some notices may not have been received, but. You you know, in the, in the email or the text I received, there there was a thought, like we had an obligation to um. You know, do more to notify and and and. I don't wanna sound harsh by any means, but it's 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 difficult when you have that many accounts and trying to manage that. And to to do personal phone calls, I think is, would be challenging, they do get notices, um, um. And we we will try to work with people to make arrangements and things like that.
If they let you know.
Yeah, if they let us know, but at some point, you know, things have to continue to progress, and. It's certainly not a pleasant thing for us to to have to do, but um.
Yeah, and they have to be two months overdue, we don't shut them off if they're just a month overdue, so they have to be two months overdue. Um, we work with everyone that calls, you know, we we help them find DHS, two-one-one to call. You know, different churches and stuff, if they need assistance, we work out payment plans with them, so, but they have to reach out to us. But we do, by state law, we send them a email and a written one of um shut-off. We offer, you know, online billing, which is free, you know, if it's taken out of your checking account and such, so we do. Work with residents as much as we can.
To be honest, that's what I do, is I do direct takeout. That way, I never have to worry that, oh geez, I put that bill into the wrong pile.
Well, yeah. We'll do that, and that's fine, but if you, like, in my situation, I stopped automatic payments because I lost income in a household. So now I have to pay every month, so I understand that theory, but like, if you're, if you have in some income insecure. Then that becomes one of the things that you don't wanna put yourself in a situation where you're accruing um twenty-nine dollar fees from your checking account. For having no, you know, a zero balance and over drawing, so.
And sometimes residents move out in the summer, the real transit ones move out, you know, apartment buildings and stuff, and they don't notify their landlord. They just leave without um paying rent and then leave without paying their utilities also, and so. No one, neither we or the landlords are aware until we've shut off that.
In the middle of the winter, do we shut off? January, no matter what, it's.
Yes, we do, based on temperatures, but you know, if there's storms or anything, we do, um, you, if you're elderly or whatever, you can have their shut-off protection plan. That's mandated by the state that we provide, that we cannot um shut off until April again.
And how old are those people?
And what?
How old are those elderly people have to be?
Fifty-five, sixty-two?
I think it's thirty-five.
I'm lying.
I will say that I I do wanna look into one aspect of this, because actually, I, it caught me as a new customer, that I set a. I set a threshold that I'm on automatic pay, but I set a certain threshold, and not knowing what to expect with my bill. I exceeded that threshold, so it didn't pay anything that month, so I got behind, and that's exactly what happened. In this situation, she's on auto pay, or that's residence on auto pay, but her bill was over her threshold that she set. And so it didn't pay, it paid zero, instead of paying, to me, it should set, it should still pay something. Uh, maybe up to her threshold, so it wouldn't cycle into that situation, so I think that's something we need to further dive into.
Okay, thank you. So that's, that's good, that's good. Anything else?
Brought it up, and I wanna recognize and thank our public safety officers and the terrible devastating fire that happened, um. And public safety and the rest of the crew who pitched in, as I understand it, while a whole bunch of folks are off deer hunting. On vacation, and um brought in the township, present two townships, and. Scared it from getting a whole lot worse than it was, so thanks, thanks to your team.
Yeah, for sure, and also, like you had mentioned, our our mutual agreements that are in place is um pretty impressive. Um, resort township and um spring. Um, Springdale Township, certainly appreciate their support, um, Director Breed um had plans to be out in the woods that morning. And when he got the call at three AM, he knew that those plans would would be changing, so certainly appreciate his commitment as well.
Ward two, Mister Shields.
No comments, I appreciate the discussion, as you said.
Ward one, Mister Moore.
Okay, following up on the election, I I know, I've mentioned before, this is not about me, but I train a team of. Volunteer voter protection folks every two years, and I just wanted to briefly read what. Uh, one of those folks who are well-trained and serve in the polls had to say about Ms. Beck and her team on Election Day. Quote, overall, the experience provided me with evidence that the voters of the tasky can be confident a quote. Safe and secure election was held on November eighth, thus ensuring their vote was counted. So kudos to you and your team for a very well-run election. Yeah, absolutely, uh, and then two, following up on um. Mister Wagner's comments, we two in Ward one, of course, are very, very grateful for all the efforts of. The public safety folks, and I got a number of uh texts from folks. I I in the, on the street and nearby, um, saying, thank you so much to public safety. And that if the fire had gone unnoticed and the wind was up, we could have lost a string of houses, hooray for our fire department and the assisting departments. Were saving the surrounding properties, so those were the voices of, from the community on both of those matters. Um, thirdly, I just wanted to mention, I'm really pleased to hear that our group decision here to kind of hold ARPA funds in advance. Is already paying benefits, as we're hearing that we've got some opportunities for matches, which will enhance our use of those funds. And then I want to make the case for a work session on policy, um, because we've got this Oprah presentation tonight. It would be great, because I think we're, we all have consensus on wanting to establish more workforce housing, more housing in general. And I think through policy, on the advice of legal counsel, we may be able to do some things to make sure that. The duration is longer, or whatever we decide is important to us, um, can happen. Second, a second, I also think that we should be looking at an ethics policy uh for City Council. Not because there isn't any particular need for that, um, but because it's an element of good governance. And I think as a part of that, some things like uh clarifying the Planning Commission, Council Communications. Enhancing those communications, those would be elements of that type of policy, so again, just a hope and vote. For a policy session, work session, that's all I got.
Uh, I agree with both of those things, I think that would be great, uh. Both policies are important, I had the opportunity of representing the city at the ribbon-cutting for the college's. First uh basket, home basketball for girls or guys, was very exciting, um. It's real basketball, real college basketball now in the city of Potaski. Uh, their schedule is posted, and I'm sure if you wanna go and see something a little different, that's a cool sport to see. They also have volleyball for women, um, and also, I had the opportunity of sitting there on a. On a, residents, uh, they're they're looking at hiring or training new residents uh at the hospital. And last Tuesday, I made a Zoom with them for uh an hour, hour and a half. Uh, to talk about what started doing the tasky, why why stay at the Potaski, what's so great about it. And uh, it was really amazing after doing that to see, we we have a hell of a lot of good things going on in this city. This, thanks to you guys, and thanks to our staff, and uh with that, have a happy Thanksgiving. Let's make sure, be very thankful for what we have.